Mr. Chairman, one minute. It's half a minute now.
I'm always on.
Mr. Chairman, it's time to open.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Selectment Meeting for Tuesday, January 8, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, if you need any further quick moment of silence, please. Police officer from Utah, Joe Schitt, who is a Massachusetts native. We ain't losing policemen. Thank you. On the community announcements, we have Monsieur Todd, our town clerk, to say a few words.
I want to announce that the town election will be held on Saturday, April 13th, from April 4th. This year's election will be for one seat for the town moderator, two seats for the board of selection, one seat for the board of assessors, one seat for the board of health, two seats for the library trustees, one seat for the board of park commissioners, one seat for the board of sewer commissioners, one seat for the board of water commissioners, one seat for the highway superintendent, one seat for the planning board, and two seats for the school committee. Nomination papers will be available starting tomorrow through Thursday, February 21st. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Donna.
Mr. Chairman, would you please check your microphone? I have a message that it might not be turned on.
Sorry about that.
But all right. Thank you.
It's good that we have you, Dave.
I appreciate that.
Next, we have minutes of a couple of meetings, open session minutes of December 18th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2018.
Any discussion? All in favor? I wasn't here. Sorry, I'm standing. And now we have executive minutes of December 18th, 2018.
I make a motion to approve. I would not to be released until all the matters are settled.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's a vote. One upstitch.
Oh, yeah, that was the one that Mike checked.
It was.
How could we forget?
I hate to trouble my town administrator into a tizzy, but we're going to take number five. Out of order because we have an open hearing at Quaterpass, and we have to wait till Quaterpass. So, community aggregation update by John P. O'Rourke. Good Energy LP.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Town Administrator, for letting me come before you tonight. I just want to give you an update on where we are in the process. If you open your presentation, just to go over a couple of the important dates that we've had. On May 1st of 2017, that's when town meeting voted to approve municipal aggregation. On December 22nd, 2017, the plan for the town was submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. And on November 19th of this year, the plan was approved by the Department of Public Utilities. It took a while because the department was tied up with the natural gas situation in Lawrence, Andover, and North Andover. So, it took a little longer than expected. But now we're at the point where we can go out for a competitive bid for electricity supply. On the next slide there, just a summary of the preliminary implementation schedule. At this point, we are obtaining account data from the utility, National Grid. And we're looking to get indicative pricing from competitive suppliers. That's the stage we're in now. We're looking to analyze the market and the indicative pricing to see if we move forward now or we wait perhaps another couple of months. Once we decide whether we're going shortly or taking a couple of months to go out, we'll develop a final RFP for the competitive suppliers. And once we do that, then we'll go out for a competitive bid. Next slide is just an implementation schedule. Once we schedule a bid day to receive bids from competitive suppliers, that happens about two weeks after we put out the RFP to them. Once that's done and we receive a bid, we mail out postcards to your residents. We found that this is a very good way of getting them prepared to receive the customer notification letter, which goes out about seven days after the postcards. We go through a 30-day required opt-out period, which allows residents to decide during that period whether they want to participate in the aggregation or whether they want to opt out. Although the law specifies 30 days, it's actually been extended to a 36-day period by the DPU to allow for mailing on the front and the back end of that 30-day period. Once that enrollment period is finalized, then power flows to enrollees on the next meter read date. During both the preliminary and primary periods, we do extremely intense and comprehensive public outreach and education. We develop press releases, social media releases, marketing materials, information, website, call center scripts, scheduling, public information meetings. This is particularly important for your council on aging because unfortunately, many of your senior citizens are targeted by some of these unscrupulous marketers of electricity. And we want to make sure that they understand that this program is sanctioned by the town and is certainly something that they should look into and hopefully avoid some of the problems they have with some of the unscrupulous marketers. Once we're in that active period, we saturate the market with information through multiple media channels, conduct those public information meetings. We have an information website that has just about any question that people want to ask. If not, my cellphone number is always available, as is my colleagues Stefano and Philip. And again, we will come out for any public meeting that you want us to be at to make sure that your residents are fully advised of the program. So essentially, right now, we're just waiting on our analysts to find out whether we're going to go out shortly or whether we're going to wait a while. So that's essentially where we are in the process. Any questions?
So I have one.
Sure.
The transition period. So, the day that the energy flows from the existing company to the next, how do they get a final meter reading to end with the company and when it flows to the next?
Well, what happens is that transition happens on the meter read date. Okay. So that they go... And all the people who are on the basic service of National Grid are the ones that receive the customer notification letter. Those people get switched over on their meter read date. And National Grid and the competitive supplier run that through electronic data transfer, and it runs very smoothly.
What if you're not a National Grid customer?
If you're not a National Grid customer, you will not get a customer notification letter. However, if you want to come into the program, all you need to do is call the competitive supplier. They'll switch you over on your next meter read date.
Well, my understanding is they were going to get switched over automatically. So if they're already with a competitor, then...
Those people who are on the basic service of National Grid, they get a customer notification letter. They get a 30-day opt-out period to decide whether they want to stay in. If they want to stay in, they don't have to do anything. If they want to opt out, they send in the card that's with them. Anyone who has already chosen a competitive supplier does not get notified. However, those people, if they're going to hear about the program...
They can then opt in.
Then they can come in.
Okay.
Yes.
So how often... What kind of contracts do you sign with the competitive supplier? And how often do those rates change? And do you go back out to bid if there's a more competitive supplier out there?
On bid day, what will happen is you'll get anywhere from three to four suppliers bidding. And we'll have a matrix for you on that day. The bids will come in, they'll be 12, 18, 24, 30, 36 months. So you'll have a choice of what to select on that day.
So each supplier will give us a bid for 12, 24, 36?
For each of those time periods, those terms. And essentially, you pick the one you want. If you're comfortable with a year, go with a year. Lately, the sweet spot in the contracts have been 30 months to three years. And it looks like that's where they're going to stay for a while. But it depends on what you want to do.
So, once that time period is up, goes out to another RFP process? And we're going to solicit three, four, five more bids and go through the same process?
If you pick a one-year contract toward the end of that one year, you go out to bid again.
Mike?
No, let me get the questions. Thank you.
Any... Obviously, we haven't gone through the big process, but what have you seen out there as far as savings for residential customers versus current plans?
Well, as you know, right now, National Grid is at 13.7. And so is Eversource. They're a couple of mills apart. Our aggregations right now are ranging anywhere from 10.4 to 11.4. So there's a substantial difference.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That looks like Quaterpass to me.
Now we got a minute.
You got another minute?
I think we're good.
Yeah, you can probably open it.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing with a license transfer.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second to open the hearing. All in favor? That's a vote. And so we have to hear from... BST Hospitality. You can both come up. Just give your names and tell them where you come from.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Aida, McDermott Coltia Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. This is Brian Schwanke. Here representing BST Hospitality Group LLC, which is going to be taking over the TKO Shays on Hingham Street. We're a couple of things on tonight. First is a transfer of that license, which is the all-alcohol beverage restaurant license, and a pledge. First of all, on the transfer, by way of experience, Mr. Schwanke and his business partner Tom Holloway cannot be here unfortunately this evening. They have over 40 years' combined experience in the restaurant industry. Mr. Schwanke has worked at Ritu Chi's in charge of actually all the area liquor licenses at some time, legal seafoods. He's the current owner of the Klan Box in Wallston Beach in Quincy, as well as the neighboring restaurant, which is Baja Box. Mr. Holloway also works at Klan Box and Baja Box. So, at the Klan Box, they do have a liquor license and a wine and malt license. He's been the owner for 13 years and never had a violation or any issue or concerns. He's tip certified. All the staff will be tip certified and trained. So we're looking to take over, hopefully revamp, revitalize, take a look at the menu, maybe punch up a few things here and there, really get things going and underway. The second half of that, for the pledge, is part of the purchase. There going to be a seller finance promissory note. So as collateral under that note, the seller has asked that we pledge the liquor license to them, and we are required to get approval from the board and the ABCC. So that's that aspect of it. There's going to be no change in the hours of operation and, you know, I think maybe some tweaks to the menu, as I stated.
DBA staying the same.
DBA staying the same. New ownership essentially is what it is.
Yeah, no plan to change anything with the operation.
Any questions? Yeah, just put your own twist to it.
Revamp.
Any questions, Mike, Karen?
No, I don't have any.
Are you doing any renovations inside?
You know, right out of the gate, just looked to freshen it up a little bit and brighten it up. Dark right now, so just some cosmetic work.
I think once they get their feet planted, they have plans to keep working on it.
Improve the food and expand the menu right away.
So do you see you go more on your revenue source? Leaning more towards the food than what it currently is?
Like to.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, both men have, you know, big background in the food industry. That's really what they want to push, is good food and, you know, go from there, so.
Well, everything you mentioned, it's more food-based than liquor-based.
Promote the food for sure.
Is there no time that the restaurant will be closing at any point during the transfer?
Should not, no. I mean, obviously, the approval with the state is still... You know, they tell you four to six weeks, so in that timeframe, then we'll take over. Hopefully, it's a seamless transition.
Wish you all the best.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I make a motion to close the hearings, Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor? That's a vote. What is the pledge of the board?
I make a motion to approve the license for our TKO Shays Incorporated, or like BST Hospitality, doing business as TKO Shays at 9:32 to 9:34, Hingham Street in Rockland.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Do we need to vote on the liability thing?
I'm sorry.
You said there's a... Some second thing you...
Oh, we also have an application for the entertainment. Use that as a separate vote, so.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on those?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine.
The hearing's closed. You guys have all said you can have a seat and enjoy the rest of the...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, come.
All right, so now, just to follow up a number, we now have a common vidler's license, an entertainment license, and an auto amusement license for the property also to consider.
Make three motions.
Three motions.
I'll give three seconds.
I'll hear one of them. All the paperwork seems to be in order.
He just gave three motions. He said he'd make three motions.
I said, yeah.
And he seconded them.
He just said, yeah, he said I'll make three motions.
You're making three motions? I made three motions.
And he seconded them.
Okay, all right.
Made it easy for you.
Yeah, all right. That works for me. All in favor?
Maybe you can...
Good luck with that.
Now you guys are all set.
Now you're all set. Now you can go.
I'm an old Quincy guy, so I know when the Klan Box used to fight with the Dairy Queen over who had the best fried clams in town. I'm talking way back in the 60s. Back before you were born. Good luck, guys.
All the best, guys.
That's it. All right. Municipal executive firm presentation. We're searching for a new town administrator. We have a couple of companies in here that want to do our search for us. And one of them is... Let me see my paper. Should I just get the names right? Of course, we don't have it on here, right?
Yeah, they do.
In the back?
Flip it down just after 6:00. Flip one more.
Go ahead. Read it for me.
So Edward J. Collins, Jr., Center for Public Management.
And the other one is?
Community Paradigm Associates.
Very good. Who wants to go first?
Mr. Chairman, both firms are here represented. Ms. Mary Arcady, I don't want to mispronounce her. Thank you, is here from the Collins Center at UMass Boston. And Mr. Bernie Lynch and his colleague are here from Community Paradigm. So, Mary, would you... There you are.
I'm resting from my two-hour drive.
Yes. Mary drove from Boston in rush hour traffic. Shrewsbury.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us and to talk about the recruitment. We just talked a little bit about Community Paradigm, our approach.
Happy to take any questions that you might have. My name is Bernie Lynch. It's already been noted. And I'm here with Sharon Flaherty, who will be working on this project as well. And we also have Rocco Longo, a nearby town administrator, that will be providing some support to us as well if needed.
Yeah, he's a local guy who's been a town administrator.
In Marshfield and Duxbury. Yeah, he was most recently in Marshfield. And most recently, too, the president of the Managers Association area. Right, so he's retired. You know, what's happening in the marketplace, if you will, of town administrators and town managers is that there's been a tremendous turnover over the last... And sort of, we'll use Rocco as an example of that. Over the last three years, more than one-third of the communities in Massachusetts that have administrators or managers have turned over. So it's a competitive market right now out there, just as it is for finance positions in municipal government. And I'm aware that you have an issue there as well.
Yes, we do.
We're working with a number of communities on similar searches for that. My background is in municipal government. I was a town manager myself. I was a town manager of the town of Chelmsford for 20 years and the city manager of the city of Lowell for seven years, seven months. Not that I'm counting exactly, but it makes me the third longest in the city's history. So I'm very proud of being able to say that I survived that. But back in 2014, I decided to leave that and go off and do some other things. Start this consulting business, as well as I'm a member of the faculty at Suffolk University in their public administration program. And up until recently, coordinated the MMA Suffolk Local Government Certificate Program to try to develop a new generation of managers. The Managers Association, a while back, recognized that this is a problem, that we don't have people coming up. And so Suffolk and the MMA have sought to try to build upon that. Actually, we're starting a new program next year in March to deal with the finance officials. So that's coming up. But I started this because I wanted to keep my hand in local government. I spent nearly 35 years, or have spent nearly 35 years, working for or with municipalities. And it's a real passion of mine that I think municipal government is really where the rubber hits the road. I think you all recognize that. And I wanted to stay part of that and stay part of bringing people into the profession of municipal management. At this point in time, we've done, I think we're either completed or in the process of completing 28 searches for town administrators here in the Commonwealth. Actually, mostly here in the Commonwealth, one in New Hampshire and one in Rhode Island. It makes us the most active recruiting firm over this past three years. We have more than anyone else. And I'd like to thank it because of the service that we provide to the communities that bring us on. And as you can see from our proposal, we have a number of communities out there and around this area that we provide to those services. The services that we provide, I think, are very similar to almost any recruiting firm that you'll talk to. We come in, and then I'll talk about the process, and then I'll talk about what I think makes us a little bit different. In terms of the process that we use, we come in, we meet with you as members of the board, we meet with the staff, and we meet with the community. We try to do community engagement as part of this process. That's something we've done in almost every recruitment that we've had. I won't say we've done it at all because some communities have opted not to participate in that type of activity. But we make that option available. That we will come out, we'll hold community forums, we'll have ways in which the citizens can participate in the process and let us know what the issues are facing the town, challenges and opportunities, and what skills and attributes are needed for the next town administrator for the town. So we do that. And what comes out of that is the development of a position profile. We've given you an example, I think, in the proposal from the town of Northfield. We'll be happy to give you others. We do them in every community that we work in. That was just the one that was sitting right in front of me when I sent out the proposal. But if you look at that, you can see it's a very comprehensive document, has quite a bit of information. We use hyperlinks to really drive the candidates that are interested in the position to the information about the town, to documents that we think would be helpful. And then we advertise the position. But beyond advertising, if it were just a matter of advertising the position, you could do that yourselves. What I think makes us a little bit different is that we go out and we do active recruiting. We go out and we find candidates that would meet the needs of the town of Rockland, the ones that would be the right fit, based upon the information that we've received from the board, from the staff, from the citizens. That we have people that meet your qualifications and have the right skills and attributes. We then work with, I anticipate that you'll probably have a screening committee. I'm not sure. Some communities do, some communities don't, most do. We work with the screening committee as we receive the resumes in. We take them in, we sort them, we stay in touch with the candidates where there is a resource to the candidates so that they can ask us questions that they wouldn't otherwise be able to ask. Again, that's the benefit, I think, of using a search firm, is there are going to be questions that candidates have that, you know, they might not want to call up the town and ask about something. Here, they can speak to me. And they can speak to me as a recruiting consultant. They can also speak to me as a former manager. I've done it. I've been there. And I know almost all of the managers in the state and beyond the state. If I don't know them, Rocco does. So, you know, we have other people that we work with as well. So we do that. Then we work with the screening committee. We give all the resumes to the screening committee with our designation of who we think are qualified, who we think are not qualified, and then the people that we think are interesting. Maybe we should take a look at them. Generally speaking, you know, screening committees choose to stick with the qualified group. But there may be some interesting people that they decide to look at as well.
Does qualified mean someone that's already held that position?
Well, that will really depend upon what you say. What you say. If you say, "We want someone who's never done it before," well, then I guess anybody's qualified. But if you're limited to a certain skill set or background. But if you say, "We want someone who's been an administrator, been an assistant administrator," that's how we're going to determine that they're qualified. Some of the qualified people we'll put into that pile. But they may be qualified, but there may be backstories to the people. And we'll work with the screening committee to understand what those backstories are because there's often stories out there that people should know about.
Now, part of your process, do you provide and do the background checks or is that on the town itself?
We include that as part of our process. If you... We do... Let me keep on going, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And then we can talk a little bit about ways we can go beyond that. After the screening committee takes a look at those resumes, they will, we will work with them to narrow the field down from, you know, 30 resumes perhaps that we received. That's pretty much average, 30 to 35. And we'll narrow it down to the seven or so that would be interviewed. We'll work with the screening committee on the interview process in terms of questions, in terms of approach, in terms of location, you know, any technical assistance they need to go through the process. And then they do the interview. Sometimes, and we'll work with the screening committee on this, but sometimes they like to ask the questions, sometimes they like us to ask the questions. And they step back and listen and then do follow-ups. Again, we don't pretend to know exactly how every community wants to do this. So we try to customize to what the community and the committee is most comfortable with. They then will choose likely three finalists. Of course, that will be driven by the board. I like three. That's a nice number. You get beyond that, candidates get a little nervous that they're one of, you know, it's like the lottery. If the chances are too great, they're not going to play. So the three's a nice number. And once those three are chosen, we then go off and do the background checks. We do references, we do ICORs. We do references, we do ICORs, just limited Massachusetts ICORs with a firm that we have out of Mansfield. And we use, again, our network to know if there's something out there that we should know about. We know, you know, you're not necessarily going to, we're very cautious about ensuring the confidentiality of the people who are applying, because it's important that Rockland get the biggest possible pool. And if people are concerned about the confidentiality, they may stay away. So, we want to make sure people feel confident about the confidentiality. And we want them to feel that now, but in the future. You know, you may hire a town administrator, they may win the lottery, and you're going to have to go back out again. And you want the town to have a good reputation as to how this search has been managed. But so we...
Do you go beyond ICORi? Will you go and look at...
Well, we will.
Financial and criminal?
We will. Actually, that was something that, we tend to do that. We were with, I was with a community just last night that we're doing some work with, and they've made the decision to hold off on some of the background until they make their actual final choice. And then they're going to do, we used a firm out of, again, out of Mansfield, Creative Services, and they can do credit, education, national ICORi, as well as other national criminal history systems board checks. And we bring those names to the board. We work with the board, help you develop questions there. If there's a process that you want to use, again, we try to customize. So, some communities like to have the three candidates come before them on a Wednesday night, be interviewed, and make a choice. Other communities like to include more of a, some participation, having people come and take a tour of the town, have people talk to them, have department heads meet with them, have a meet-and-greet type of, we can talk about all those, we would talk about all those down the road. But we can do, we've done that in a number of communities. And then you do the, you make your choice, and we'll work with you on the negotiation of the contract. Ultimately, it's going to be your contract, so you really are the ones that have to make that decision. But we will serve as an intermediary. I think it's important to point out that, again, that's something I think that makes us a little bit different than some other firms, is we stay with you through the entire process until you get your choice made and signed on the dotted line. And then we make the commitment that, you know, well, we'll have to, I was going to, we would, if someone leaves midway through that first year, we would come back and work with you again.
Okay.
So, I know you have some, I know you have some interesting charter language, though, so I want to be careful about that.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that, just that aspect of it. And that's going to be a challenge, somewhat of a challenge for us, is that charter language. But again, I think that, you know, again, having been in the position, I can, you know, we can speak to that, as to how that, how that would work. So, that's our, that's our process.
So, I got a question for you. So, you know, one of the, one of the concerns I have is obviously, you know, with that charter language, does that limit us in some candidates who may already have experience? It may not be as attractive coming for one year. If we went down the road of finding a unique candidate that we think might be the right candidate but doesn't have the experience, does your firm offer any type of assistance in helping transition that town administrator in that first year as a resource?
Absolutely. We would certainly be willing and able to do that. Again, I think that that's where it's significant that we've sat in that chair. And so, we can do some coaching, we can be a resource that people can draw upon. In fact, you know, the, most of the, the person that you will be dealing with here in Rockland is primarily me, as well as Sharon. But we do bring in Rocco and others from time to time as parts of that. And for instance, you know, I know that Rocco was just involved, he was doing some work, and has been coaching a new town administrator in another community. So, that's something that we can do, absolutely.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
You know, I was looking through your recommended timetable. I mean, is that strictly how you guys do it? I noticed that it's a 14-week process that would bring us, if we were to bring you guys on board next week, that would bring us to April 20th. And that's kind of, kind of up against it, I think, as far as we're concerned, as far as having a town administrator in that seat. Is there any way to shorten that process without taking any shortcuts, obviously?
The best way to shorten that process is generally they take 14 to 16 weeks. I will say that. And in fact, our turnaround is pretty aggressive compared to...
Some others.
The town of, the town of Norwood, we did it in exactly 12 weeks. The town of Linfield, I think we did it in 11 weeks. All of the stars have to align, though. Part of the, Linfield was, it was, they wanted to get it done by January 1st, so they sort of ran through the holidays to get it done. In Norwood's case, they, the biggest alignment of stars has to do with the availability of your screening committee members.
Okay. What's the recommended number of members in that committee?
Five to seven.
Okay.
For that very reason. If you get beyond that, then it becomes far more complicated to schedule people.
But to that point, I think we need to get candidates in that committee that not only have experience, but also are going to be available, so we don't prolong it.
Right.
So, they have to, twofold, they have to have experience and they have availability.
Yeah, they get to know how, yeah.
Because the other, the other part of that is that the, once you make your selection, chances are, particularly if it's a current town administrator, they probably have a 30 or a 60-day notice period.
Yeah.
So, that's...
So, if we put seven guys on and two selectmen, one town administrator, there's three, and then...
I don't think we can be on it, because we're doing the hiring. We're going to get the screening committee.
Yeah, you can be screened.
We weren't with the town accounting position.
Do you see that a lot, or do you see more residents being part of the screening committee?
They're supposed to be presented to us to make the final hire.
Right. I have seen it. We're, I'm trying to think of some recent examples. Most, I'd say probably 60 or 70% are just residents, but there are communities that have selectmen, either one or two, that sit on the committee.
It seems like it would be repetitive to have...
I just don't think that, I mean, my personal opinion is that they should be picked by the community and presented to us to make the final hire. I think if somebody, if one of us were to sit on that screening committee, then we might be biased towards somebody based on having more knowledge of that person going through the entire process. And we might come out with a candidate that, you know, maybe just one person would have a favorite.
And I think it's important to have the public's input as well.
I agree.
One question, like, does, if a firm have any experience in, like, on the, on the screening committee, like, bringing in, bringing in, like, a neighboring town administrator, like, or a town manager, like, to, someone who knows the community, knows the job, like, what actually goes into the job that, say, residents really don't know, that can bring that experience and help to filter through that way as well? I'm just wondering.
No.
Okay.
We've, we have not done that. I guess primarily, well, I guess it's a couple of reasons. Primarily because we feel that that's something we bring.
Oh, okay.
Haven't done it.
Understood.
The other is that there's been some, there's some back and forth with the International City and County Management Association, ICMA, with members participating and judging other members.
Got it.
So, that's, it's gone back and forth. They've gone back and forth on that.
And a completely different question, but what does, like, a typical community engagement process look like very generally? I mean...
Generally, what it would be, what we've used in other locations, and there's probably YouTube videos out there of, I think Norwood actually has that out there that we did there. Essentially, it's us going into a room, this room or some other, maybe your library has a community room, and inviting the public to come in, and I facilitate a discussion. I ask people the same, basically the same questions I ask everyone: issues, challenges, opportunities, skills, and attributes. And I find that in many of the community forums we do, we, we're there to take their feedback, but we also find that we become a resource to the community to understand aspects of what a town administrator should be.
Yep.
And what it should be doing.
I just have one more question, Mr. Chairman. In terms of our taking the goals and, and the priorities, like, of this board, like, and incorporating of that and those requirements collectively and individually, like, into their job description, how would, how do you typically do that?
Well, generally, we sit down, we try to make time, either in person or by phone, to speak to each board member and get their feedback. And then the profile is written in a way, the profile comes back to you. It isn't just, we meet and then we talk, we decide what it should say about Rockland, and we walk out and recruit. We want you to approve what we're saying. So, then that's when it'll come back, and you'll have a chance to sort of see what each other's comments have been.
Got it.
Because it'll be inserted into that document.
So, I'd like to go back to something. You said you actively pursue candidates. So, how do you do that? Where do you do that? Where are you looking to pull this pool from? Because you mentioned, there's a challenge of qualified candidates out there.
True. In terms of advertising, we're advertising the UMass Municipal Association primarily, you know, I won't say that we always, we always end up with people from Massachusetts, but most of the time, communities like having someone that knows town meeting, for instance. We have brought people in from other states, though, as well. So, we also advertise in the International City and County Management Association. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean the people will be from, you know, what's helpful about that is it gives the recruitment sort of a formality that you're choosing to pick the professional, the people that are professional managers here in the country. And there are also people that may not see the position advertised in the MMA, because they're in some other part of the country, but they're from Massachusetts originally, or they know. So, I have a candidate right now that's from Texas, whose son is going to school up here. And he have, he's applied for a couple of positions, and because he wants to be up here, because he's fallen in love with Massachusetts. Now, there's going to be a bit of a learning curve for him, but again, it can happen, that people come in, come outside of the state, learn about Massachusetts and how it works, and fit in very well. So, there are great examples of that out there in Massachusetts.
Do you actively go to the, to the schools that have the programs?
Then we also advertise that, we coordinate with the Kennedy School, Suffolk, UMass, Amherst, with their MPA program, those specifically. Anything I've missed? Clark? Yeah, so we do...
So, you pull it from their post-alumni?
From their alumni.
Yeah.
They wouldn't, right.
Yeah, not grad, but from their alumni pool to see.
Right. We do that. And then we, again, we're still involved with the managers' group. So, I'll be out there talking to managers, you know, I'll be at the MMA next week, you know, talking to people about different positions that we have available. So, we would do that. And again, to look back at the Suffolk program, there's a number of managers, or a number of people that have gone through that MMA Suffolk program that are now becoming applicants or becoming administrators. So, we use that network and use that database. We have a, and then we have people that have applied for positions, and it just hasn't been the right fit, or they've, they contact us with interest if a position opens up in eastern Massachusetts, on the south, southeastern Massachusetts, something along those lines. And we'll keep track of that, and we can draw upon those people as well.
How long have you been at Suffolk? You just announced that.
I joined there, that, in 2014, right after I left Lowell. I actually got the call from, I was on the faculty, technically, maybe I still am, as an adjunct at UMass Lowell for 30-some-odd years in their political science department. As I left Lowell, I was contacted by Suffolk to join their faculty as well.
Me and Mike are graduates of MPA program.
Oh!
That's why I asked.
Oh, great.
Sorry we didn't cross paths.
All right. So, actually, I stopped my state and local government finance course, PAD 27, next Tuesday night.
Enjoy.
Yeah.
Hi, Doug Snow for that.
Me, too.
Oh, Doug's the one who asked me to come down and teach that. It's going to be a hybrid, though. So, seven in class and seven off, online.
Okay.
A little bit different.
We all set?
Well, thank you.
This fellow here now?
If I could, just summary.
Absolutely.
In terms of, I just want to, what I want to leave you with is what we like to think of is the difference that we have, the advantage. There are good firms out there, you know, you're going to be hearing from one right after me. But the difference, I think, that we bring, we have considerable municipal experience that, working, you know, I did it for 30 years. Other members of the team have done it for similar periods of time, have sat in that job, and we know what's required of it. We have a very extensive network, you know, in terms of everything I just described, who we know out there in the municipal world. We prepare probably the most detailed position description you will see. We put a lot of information, and credit goes to Sharon on that, because she's the one who compiles all that and puts it together. That tells people a lot about the town and really encourages them to apply. We do include community engagement. We think it's an important process. Doesn't always work, and it's not always, for every community, but we think it's important in the process. We advise beyond recruitment. That's, that's really a nice way of saying that we can't stop giving you our municipal opinions. So, as we're working with you, there may be some other things that come up that we'll be willing to step up and say, "You should probably look at doing this. We won't do anything like that publicly, but we will be there as a resource for the, for the town." We do customize. We can make this sort of what you want. We give you a scope, and, you know, I won't say we're going to totally redo it, but we'll play around the edges in terms of what you want. So, if that means you want a process that has some type of assessment of candidates during the final interview process, we can develop something for you. If you want to do some type of essay questions as part of this process, we can work with you on something like that. We're very good at selling the town and the position. I think that's very important. Almost every community has something in its background that scares people away.
I don't think we, yeah, yeah. We got nothing.
I had to be, I had to be careful how I said that.
Yeah.
And the whistle.
But, you know, we did the, the town of Amherst search, and I'll use that one as an example. I actually was involved with a presentation at the MMA last year on this very topic of recruiting a manager in a difficult situation. In the case of Amherst, the town manager passed away very unexpectedly. The city, the town was really shaken by that. That was a problem. Beyond that, there was also a charter move underway to make Amherst a city. So, whoever was going to be appointed to that position wasn't sure whether they were going to be able to make it through their full contract without having the position go away. We feel that we were able to step in, work with the town, work with the residents, work with the candidates, and get the best possible person. And they've actually did change the charter. They moved from a town meeting and town manager to a, they looked at a council mayor, and they moved to a council manager. So, they now have a town council, very similar to Franklin nearby here, that they've used. So, but we're good at sort of, again, being a resource to the town, to sell the town and the position, and allay any fears that people have. And the last is, again, to reiterate, our recent experience with the market. Nearly 30 in the last three years, many of them, as I explained to Marcy, many of our recruitments that you see on our list that are ongoing, Brewster should be done in a couple of weeks, Norfolk is voting right now as I speak, you know, Sturbridge is voting next week. So, we've been doing a lot, so we know what's out there, but we're, we have certainly the bandwidth to come in and work with the town of Rockland. That's it. All right? Great.
Bernie, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah.
We are ready.
We are ready.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary.
Hey, Mary, how you doing? I'm Rich. Nice to meet you.
I'm Mary.
Hello. Larry.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Karen, nice to meet you.
Yeah, how are you doing, Mike? Nice to meet you.
Thank you. That's just nice. Thank you.
You ready? Should I jump in?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Well, I'll go quickly because I said I'd be out of here, I'd only take up to an hour. So, you know, no. No, we're very concise at the Collins Center. One thing I realized is that my resume apparently was a blank page in your proposal, so I apologize. I wanted to include that. So thank you so much for having the Collins Center in tonight. My colleague, Bob Halpin, couldn't make it tonight, but the two of us will be on the team and our other colleague, Elizabeth, who conveniently lives next door in Hanover, will help us with logistics, but she won't be one of the two key people. Bob and I are the key people on the team. So I'll just jump right in and tell you a little bit about myself. I've been with the Collins Center nine of its ten years. The Collins Center was formed in 2019 with the sole mission to help governments work better. And while we get paid, we're a nonprofit, we're part of the university, and everybody who works with us is somehow connected to the public sector, whether it's somebody who's been retired. I'm not retired. I quit to be home with my kids and then I started doing work part-time. Now I'm paying for my daughter at Stonehill College, so I'm basically working full-time. And with two more on the way to college in a few years. Since being in creation, we have done over sixty executive recruitments. I've been involved in about fifty of them as one of the co-leads. We put two people on every project just for that accommodation of screening committees. That's going to be your biggest challenge is getting your screening committee to be able to meet. Candidates will gladly come whenever you're available, but it's the availability of your screening committee. So what I'd like to do is just go through our quick process and really just answer your questions. So what we do is we spend the time, you see the example of the Norwell profile. We spend the time upfront getting to know the municipality, the job that you need to fill and the challenges that you're facing. We focus an awful lot on those things. When we meet with, and it's really up to you all to determine who we meet with, the stakeholders, whether it's public officials, we like to meet with staff or at least afford an opportunity for staff to meet with us. Sometimes we will meet individually with a finance person to get some of the more nuts and bolts data. We will typically meet, offer a meeting, we don't make anybody meet with us, to somebody from the school. If there's school issues, whether it's a community, whether it's a finance committee or an advisory board, we like to get that input from the stakeholders. But you're the most important, with all due respect to all of them. You're the most important stakeholders. You're the ones filling this job and it's your responsibility. So we like to meet individually with each one of you. We never violate any open meeting laws and we want to get the individual insight. And we do ask that, and we will do a general community forum if you would like us to, that would be included in our fee. Some municipalities like that, some don't. Sometimes we do them and only five people show up, but that's five people who had access to us in the process and that's always good. We try to be inclusive as possible and we do that upfront because when it gets to the decision stage, that's up to you. You know, so you're the ones making, making the selection. So what we do is we spend time putting together the profile. We ask that you actually vote and approve the profile. We, as much as we recommend you use a screening committee, it's, it's this body that should be making that determination of what you're looking for. So that's how we approach the profile. This becomes the template moving forward. It becomes our, our guidebook. We use that to recruit. Gone are the days that we're printing an awful lot of these. We're usually, you know, distributing those electronically. We do print a handful of these and we, that does help us market. What we do very well is direct recruitment and recruiting people who may not be looking for a job. Sometimes they're your best candidates. The pool these days, there's been a lot of generational shift. There's a thin pool, but all we care about is the right pool for you and your job. So we do a lot of direct recruiting. The benefit, one of the huge benefits of working with a Collins Center is that we have many different branches of our organization. I lead the HR practice, which includes the recruitment. We do an awful lot of classification and compensation studies. We also have our analytical division that does CIPs and budgets. So we work currently, we're working towards three hundred and fifty-one. We're at two hundred and fifty-six municipalities that, that we have done work with. And each one of those is a contact. It's an HR director, it's a finance director, it's a member of the board, it's a planner. So we have our tentacles out there and we do an awful lot of, of direct recruiting to our clients and those who, you know, we know of through our extensive network. We also do an awful lot of work with, with boards like yourself. So we have contacts. Every time we've been, done a search, we've got five to seven screening committee members that have done a search with us. So we do have that extensive network and that's really helpful. I myself have been doing municipal HR and labor relations for twenty-eight years now. Bob Halpin, as you see on his resume, he was one of our direct recruits and he was not looking for a job. And we, he was working for a planning commission and we approached him and he became the, the very successful town manager in Framingham. Another one not too far, and I gave you that profile on purpose, Peter Moran was not looking for a job and we direct recruited him for Norwell and has been, you know, extremely successful. We did, one of the things we do really well, and I think it would really benefit this town, is we've had a lot of experience with difficult transitions. It's been since 2013 that we worked to fill the town manager's job in Cohasset, if anybody has a little history. You know, that was, we did a lot of work upfront to get that right. So that advertised position was what they were looking for. Too often, you know, you have the pendulum swing of, we hire the opposite, then we go too far this way and then we come back in the middle. We try to avoid that pendulum. We did that also. Bill Keegan in Foxborough wasn't looking for a job. You know, hugely successful in, in that recruitment. You know, every municipality has a culture. It's our job to figure out what that culture is. And one of the key things that you see in there, and I have to say, the Collins Center has been around for ten years and other businesses' profiles are starting to look like ours, so that's good. So it is good to get at the challenges of the municipality. And we don't want to sell it. We want to be honest about what's here. And what's really great is the meeting you had last night and, you know, your town came together, you came up with money. I forget who I should be quoting. Somebody said, you know, you're moving forward. It's a new year, it's a new opportunity for greatness. And this is a fabulous town and anybody would be lucky to come here to be the, the town administrator. And we just need to find that right person. And you've already done all the hard work, so it's really a nice clean slate moving forward. So I think that's what we would use. We would create a profile similar to that. I didn't want to, sometimes we don't focus on the negative, but I'll quote the, this was Cohasset. I'll quote the Cohasset one. You know, in the last two years, there has been some, a sense of uncertainty within the town government. We want to be honest with people. We also want to be accurate. So the key is in the profile, understanding what you're looking for. You know, we've filled jobs when there's receiverships or control boards. You know, in one town, there was, you'd be shocked to know sometimes there's politics. The Board of Selectment was split on how much authority to delegate to the next town administrator. They had been in a situation where they had an executive secretary and they went to a town administrator and some of the board members never got over the fact that it was a town administrator. So that first one was a challenge. We did a whole workshop with them to come up with a little visioning ahead of time. You all have your vision. You don't need that. You know what it is you're looking for. We've been in situations where there's an assistant in place and people say, well, that will hurt the pool. You know, in Barnstable, there was an assistant who was in place and it didn't hurt the pool. Ironically, he got the job, but there was an honest, full process. So that's what's nice about us too, is that we, we provide that system and that objective viewpoint. Fairly standard, I think the key difference with us is two things. The extensive work we do on the profile to get it right. What you don't want to do, and I'm quoting my retired friend, Richard, here, is choose the best candidate from a mediocre pool. You know, you want the best of the best, not the best of the satisfactory. And so that's really important in our ability to network and our connections with everybody. So what we do is we create the profile, we have the resumes come to us, we do, we have a Gmail account. What we tend to do, and then we do all of our networking, our outreach, we'll, we'll advertise in the ICMA and the MMA and the Mass Managers and all. The good thing is you get timing coming up. There's a Mass Municipal Annual Meeting, hope to see you all there. I forget our booth number. You know, we can do some groundwork there as well with people. So we do the recruitment, we do the advertisement. During that time of that month, we take advantage of that time and meet with your screening committee so that when that deadline comes, you're hitting the ground running. You don't want to form your screening committee at the end of the deadline. We will work with them. We spend an awful, I love to wear my HR hat, sometimes I'm the doom and gloom person, but I'm also the liability person. And we give instructions, I'm trained by the MCAD, we give instructions on what you can ask, what you can't ask. We help formulate questions. We get that all done based on the profile you create. What we don't recommend is that we create questions once we've seen the resumes because we want the questions to reflect what you're looking for, not in reaction to a candidate. Now, obviously, we, we want to have standard questions. You can always ask follow-up questions. But in terms of the framework, we also spend time telling people not to Google candidates. That's our job to do the background. Sometimes, you know, we all know too well, we can Google things and see things that are either true, not true, alternative facts, you know, shaded one way or another. So we like the screening committee really to focus on the resumes in front of them. We do an awful lot of pre-screening, you know, we will, you know, and it's a small network. If in fact they're from Massachusetts and working in a municipality, we probably know them anyways. Not that they've all been candidates for us, but we have so many connections. So we, we spend that time with the screening committee, get them on board with what their charge is. Sometimes we ask you all to vote a charge. We say that it should be a screening committee, not as a search committee, because we want that to be, they're screening them for you. They're not deciding who's going to be the next person in the seat. They're deciding who you should interview to consider for that. So some, one, one thing that we do a little differently is that we share all the resumes that we receive with the screening committee. We might say, we don't think this one meets the qualifications, but you'd be shocked to know that people want to know who applied and they want to be sure they're seeing everybody. Because these days, you never know that somebody might know of somebody who's, we see more and more planning directors applying. You know, they might not fit that exact. One thing I should say is you may want to say a master's degree is preferred. We recommend you don't say it's required. You could have somebody with a bachelor's in twenty years that you're cutting off the table. So we all, always say, it's really an equivalent combination of what you're looking for. You will determine whether Massachusetts experience is required or not. That's a call you need to make. Different municipalities do it differently. If there's a, a strong finance person, sometimes people can go without that. You know, some towns hire former members of Boards of Selectment to, to be town admin. Great finance committee people know the budgets better than others. So there's no hard and fast rule. We will ask you, you know, what do you think? Sometimes in larger municipalities, you can find somebody who may not have direct experience, but because there's enough people around, so we'll need to delve into that of, you know, is there a bench helping? You know, or, or do you, are you really the chief cook and bottle washer and you have to know everything? So we do that work with the screening committee. The deadline comes, what we do is we put together, we do a physical book of resumes. We really try to avoid email and confidential information. We take that very seriously for you, our client, and the candidates themselves. This is risky business to get yourself out there or to have your name be out there. So I'm not going to show you exactly, because this is a real book. This was Barnstable. So we do a book of resumes that we, we mail to the screening committee members or mail them to one person here for distribution.
So that's every resume that came in?
Every resume that comes in.
And then you, you will help identify if you feel they are a qualified or?
Yes.
Okay.
So the second piece of that is the corresponding table. You know, like my redactions on like Mueller. We send a table that corresponds with the resumes in the book. So we will note there, like, sometimes we do an A group and a B group and we say the A, meet your qualifications. The B, we're a little questionable, but there may be somebody on the committee who knows something about them and would trigger. Sometimes people write resumes differently. You want to give everybody the chance. So what we do is we, you know, we give a summary of their education and their work experience. And we ask the, the screening committee to come into that first review meeting with the answer, when we give them a column to write it on, yes, no, or maybe. And it's not yes, no, and maybe, do we want to hire them? The question is, do you want to meet them for forty-five minutes to an hour? And that helps us come to consensus. So by coming to the meeting with that, you kind of remove some of the debate over the good and the bad and it kind of keeps it cleaner. So we do a tally at the beginning, who's a yes, who's a no, who's a maybe. If you have seven nos, they're not getting an interview. If you have seven yeses, they're getting an interview. You don't need to debate them. One thing that we recommend, again, we bow to the wisdom of the screening committee because you're going to, we're facilitating their work. We do not recommend courtesy interviews. We do not, you know, if they're not going to be, you know, if you didn't know their name, would you bring them in? I'm not saying we haven't facilitated one or two in the past because we all live in the political world, but as a rule, we do not recommend somebody just to give them an interview. We view that as unfair. So we facilitate the interviews, we schedule them. We work with whoever the chair or the liaison, sometimes it's a, you know, an HR person. Sometimes it's a person on the committee who's going to post the meetings, that sort of thing. We will work with whoever, whoever that is. You know, to find the place, where are we going to meet, that sort of thing. Only once, and ironically, it was when Bob Halpin was hired in Framingham, because that was an 11-member committee. That was a little large, we made it work, you know.
What do you recommend for a committee member?
I think seven is ideal, five or seven. People say it should be an odd number in case you have to vote. My point was, only in that 11-member committee did we actually have to have votes of who to move forward to the next phase. Most of the time, it's the yes, no, maybe consensus. And our commitment is to be inclusive, not exclusive, because I'd rather, if it's a maybe, and, you know, when we do our voting, if it's three yeses and two maybes, well, that's five positives. But if it's three nos and two maybes, that's more negative. So we use that sort of system to build consensus on the candidates. So, as soon as we're done with the interviews, we do another consensus sort of, you know, what did we think? We like to interview the candidates within a few days of each other. You know, two on one Monday, two on the next Monday, and two on the next Monday is too long. You want to, because the first one and the last one, you know, that's why I want it to be last tonight. You're going to remember me. So, sometimes we do a Friday/Saturday, or we do a Tuesday/Wednesday. It really is about the schedule with your screening committee, which is why it's nice, we've got enough people assigned that we can cover any meeting.
What's the typical length of time, from the point of being hired to the point of assigning a contract with the potential town administrator? Do you guys typically run?
You know, thinking about that tonight, assuming you call me tomorrow, we'd get the profile done, here we are already at the eighth, ninth. We'd get the profile done in January, most likely. We'd advertise it for February. Interviews with the screening committee could be early March, we do backgrounds, which I'll get to. So your interviews would be the end of March, beginning of April. That's assuming screening committee members can meet. So, to be conservative, I'd say the beginning of April.
And then you tie into, you know, notices for that person to leave there?
That would be-
Which then extends the-
Right. So that would be, say you did your final interviews the first week in April. And you selected somebody, they're going to give three or four weeks, if they're working, if they're in transition, you know. There's plenty of people who, you know, for a variety of reasons, you know, were not reappointed or whatever. So sometimes, so realistically, you're looking at May. But that's not bad, because the budgets are done by then. This is a good time to, you know, budgets are already being formulated. So, I think it's a good time, you know. So what we would do is do the interviews, we do the reference checks. What we say when they get out of the committee, we don't say they're finalists yet. We say that they're moving to the next phase, something may come up. We don't want to list them publicly as a finalist, so we would do the references. Now, it's, it's an additional cost to do the, it depends on how many you do. Say the group moved five forward, and you want to do five backgrounds. We use a subcontractor to do an educational check, a query check, and a credit check. That's like $300 a candidate, so we don't charge you if you don't do any of those.
Do you go beyond a query?
We have a lot of ways to find out information that certainly would not violate the probationary board issues. We don't have police departments run bobs, you know, some, no, no. It's a violation. Now, we, because of our network and our ability, we often find things that people may not present.
Now, why would that be a violation if you get them to sign off on it as part of the hiring process?
Because a board of probation shows arrests. And it's discriminatory, it's all under the MCAD. So it's all about, because certain populations have more arrests, you know, so, so we don't, we don't do that.
Interesting, public different than private.
Sometimes-
Totally, totally amazing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm getting my diplomacy skills ready. Here's what we have seen happen. Sometimes, after we do our backgrounds and the finalists are in fact named, a client might do some additional. So, and I would actually defer to your police chief on that one. You know, so, it is, it is different. I mean, it's all about, that's my liability HR hat I'm wearing. So we would do the backgrounds, we have them sign a release saying we can talk to anyone. We very, we check the ones they list, but we also check the ones that they don't list. This just happened to me in a Transit Authority search. And I'm like, why didn't that person list the director, you know? Failed to tell us that he or she's contract was not renewed for the end of the month of October. We never would have known that by checking that person's references. So, so we do go, particularly if, if we don't know them, you know. So we do go the extra mile on the references. It's just too much, too many liabilities for not getting a good reference. And if people can't provide a reference, we count that as negative. You know, people will say to us, well, you can't talk to my current boss unless I'm the final candidate. Well, then you don't want to be the final candidate. You know, that's just unacceptable. You know, if you're going to be in the paper next week as the finalist, you know. Now, so that's how we approach the references. What we would do, and again, this becomes your preference and we would work with you on that. We can help schedule your interviews, we can help do, some boards like to have a meet and greet with the candidates. I would say it depends on how many your screening committee puts forward. We recommend, unless your charter says otherwise, that you don't list an absolute number of what you want. Usually boards say three to five, you know.
What is the honor?
We say three to five, three can become two really quickly. And five can become four. You know, we've had another example, poor Bob, he's not here tonight to defend himself. In Framingham, we also recommend not sending B candidates in. So if you only have two A candidates, send two, that's what we did in Framingham, and Bob was selected.
Because you just didn't have a big enough pool that you felt?
We didn't have a big enough, highly qualified pool for the nature of the culture of Framingham, you know. And again, two, two can become one, and then you don't really have a debate. You know, we want to provide you choices. What we've done, if we've had people drop out, we've extended the search to get more candidates. You know, there's no harm, there's no harm in that. I know that it means you have a vacancy longer, but it's a bigger harm to have the wrong person.
Right.
You know, so, that's how we approach it. We do not, and I tried, I looked at my document today and it looks like there was half a sentence cut off. We will help facilitate your hiring, but we don't negotiate a contract for you, that's your job. Some, some places will say, oh, we can do the contract. That's the foundation of your relationship with this next person. So, we can help you decide what pay range you want to advertise, or, you know, we can give information of, oh, you know,
Comparable, things like that.
Mary wants, you know, Mary needs, you know, five weeks of vacation, you know, sweet. But we don't sit down and do the bargaining for you. So, we think you and your attorneys should be doing that. So I will answer any questions, I hope I didn't miss anything.
So I have a question. So you had mentioned, as an example, you're seeing town planners out there that are starting to try to seek an interview for the job. So obviously, that person does not have experience as a town administrator. Does your organization provide the municipality with additional support if we were to go down that road? That if we found the right candidate that may not have, you know, all the experience, do you support that through a transition period?
Yes, we can do that. We, we have a nice pool of people who are retired town administrators and managers. And they have done that sort of mentoring, you know. Actually, Dave Colton, who's retired from Easton, you know, he does that work. So it's a great opportunity for that, because some plant, depending on what their job was, you know, you know, depending on where they are, a Director of Community Development and Planning has extensive experience of dealing with the public. And if they have a large department, you know, with umbrella divisions underneath them, they would need less, you know. A planning director from a very small town, I'll pick one, Worthington, up in the mountains, you know, would need more work. But again, you also don't know what their backgrounds are. So we, we do have that capacity, and that's a wise thing, wise thing to do, you know. We do a lot of that, our school people do a lot of that with, you know, business managers getting in. But we do have that capacity, that would be easy.
Any else?
I have a few questions. In terms of the priorities of this board, you know, like in the, like we obviously have our collective thing if we want, but also like individual goals. And you mentioned that you would, at the outset, that you would like meet with us individually. On my belief, how would you incorporate that into your, our profile, like in job requirement, like blending all those things together?
Sure. Would I, one of the first things we would do, so when you call me tomorrow, I'll set a date next week or the week after. And if you're all going to the MMA, I can meet you there. Meet each one of you. And usually, we get those themes that you see in this profile. So what we would do is coalesce those and put it in the draft, so that then you are all debating everybody. I'm guessing you probably have some that overlap and some that don't. And what we do is we pull that together, create a draft profile. And what works well is, obviously, you can't deliberate as a group through email, but you can send me edits. So we do it that way. And then, on a, on the meeting that you're going to vote the profile or do final drafts, I'll come to that meeting. And we can work that out. But the first draft go-around would be emailed directly to each one of you. And that profile will be the result of all of that input, whether it's a department head meeting. You know, we've done, you know, we get a lot of good information by meeting with department heads, because they're the boots on the ground. You know, so we pull that information in too, because it might trigger something that from your lens, you're not seeing.
Oh yeah, no, the day-to-day people. In terms of the community engagement you mentioned, what does that generally look like?
Typically, it would be in a room like this, or in a library room, and we say, come meet the consultants. What we like to do is say, these are the things we're going to ask you. We don't want it to be a complaint session.
Agreed.
You know, so, but we say, what are the challenges facing the town? What are the challenges facing the next person in this job? And what are the characteristics you're looking for in that next person? So when you see that in the profile, it says the ideal candidate, or what, that's what we get at from those. And we coalesce that for you to say, yes, that is what we're looking for. I will tell you what everybody, every department head will tell me. We don't want a micromanager, obviously, you know, and, but they want, you know, most want good leadership. You know, so, so that's what we, that's how we get the community forum in. You know better, your culture, what setting you want that to be in.
Okay. And then one more question, like in my last one, thankfully. What, like, and so in terms of, like a screening committee, like, I mean, generally speaking, what, who composes that?
Oh, sure.
I'm in a typical search.
Sure. It does depend on the culture of the town, but we typically see, this may not go over well, and I might, you might just tell me to leave. We do not like to see department heads on the screening committee.
Okay.
You should not be selecting your next boss. Even though it's just a screening, we don't recommend that. And, now, whether it's you have a retired somebody, you know. Sometimes there's a school personnel in there, whether it be a business manager or a school committee member. We, it's your call, whether you want one or two of you on there. If, you know, you can't have more than the quorum, but you know best. Sometimes we see, I can argue both sides. It's helpful to have members of the board, because they get a sense of it. Other times, it's not helpful, because people defer to the member of the board. You know, so I think that would be up to you all to decide. Sometimes that's why, in one municipality not to be named, they put their strongest, most boisterous member of the board on the committee, saying with the theory that, great, he or she is going to, you know, be part of it. It was a little disruptive, but in another instant-
Because that person dominated it.
Yes. So that's where the personalities come in, and you all need to know. We find that, and it all depends on what you want and what level of knowledge you want about the pool and the candidates, you know, and who your screening committee chair is. We typically see a finance person. Sometimes a school person, you know, if you went bigger, you could have, sometimes there is a business person. Sometimes we see people from a board or commission that have knowledge of the town, you know, one of your town fathers or mothers, that would have history and insight. That's always helpful, to know the way we used to do things, and what do we value. So it really does-
Do you see private members, citizens that are in the private sector versus the public sector as part of it?
On screen, yes, absolutely. So, yeah, I'm trying to think of our last screening committee. Yeah, there was somebody who was the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce. There was a school business manager, there was a finance committee member. So what we, when you think about what your, you know, whose perspective do you want in evaluating these candidates? And, and who do you, whose judgment do you trust? You know, people don't, it's rare to have people volunteer for something like this with an agenda, you know. People want to do this because they want to help their town. So that's typically what we see. Some get much more formal. I'll give you the example of Framingham, very political, you know. Five-member board, they each got to appoint two of their own members, you know, two, it didn't matter who it was. And then there was like an ex officio. And it worked, it worked okay, but that's a different, you know, that's a different kind of feel. You know, so you don't have to look, you know, we're here on the South Shore. As my husband says, God's country, because he's from Weymouth. You don't have to look far to see politics and boards, you know, and you know the cultures. And, and we want to respect that.
What do you do if you have trouble attracting qualified candidates to apply?
We keep at it till we get there. So if in fact, we come up on that deadline, you know, and we don't have what we view as a decent pool, we'll give you a call and say we want to extend it. It's happened once in the 50 times that I've done. However, to be fair, in three of, I think it's three or four, we've had, once we've done the interviews, we're like, not the depth we want, and we've extended the deadline. You know, so, it's happened a few different ways. People always say, oh, how many do you expect to get? This is an attractive job in a wonderful municipality. This is a great community, a great location, you will get good people to apply. So, that I'm not worried about. You're not in financial ruin, you are, you know, a solid municipality with a great structure. So, you'll get good people to apply. You're not regionally challenged, like some of our clients have been. You know, you're in Northfield, you know, if you don't know Route 2, here you have, you know, you have a great location here. So I think that's really, that's really positive. So I'm not overly worried about- really, that's really positive. So I'm not overly worried about that. And even, you know, even some of the trials and tribulations you have had recently isn't a reason somebody would not apply. It's not a structural deficit here of, of finance or structure. You have a great organization. And, and people know that. And if they don't, we'll tell them.
No, I think last night's special town meeting-
It was wonderful.
-helped our cause, so.
Yeah.
I think we'll get some great candidates.
You will.
Just in case, I just-
Yeah, no, you will.
I have a couple of things.
Sure.
What percentage of applicants are women?
Oh, good question. Not enough in my book, you know, but more and more. I mean, I, if I have to say, let me see, like my last one, I did 20 applicants, six out of 20, you know, okay, five, 40, 40 percent, 30, 40 percent?
Of the candidate pool.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it depends on the numbers, you know.
The only other question I would have is regarding committee security and, and all the resumes and things, those are only gonna be seen by the screening committee in your company, right?
Yes, and I hope you know that.
Okay, just wanted to establish that.
Sometimes, I appreciate you mentioning that, because sometimes we've been asked.
Because I know that, you know, if the wrong person gets in there and, you know, they sit down, they go, oh geez, I tell you, Susie from Brockton is a, you know, and-
Yeah.
That's Susie's cousin.
Yeah.
She goes, oh, Susie, you know, and then the next thing you know, it's a-
We stress that at that first meeting, even before we get resumes going, you know, and some municipalities make people sign a confidentiality agreement. I think people's word is their bond in this kind of situation, you know. We have, I, I will tell you, I have, I did have one screening committee say, oh, well, I ran all the names by a friend. I, my jar was on the floor, you know, and it's like, you just don't know. Don't share it with your spouse, you know.
There you go.
It's, we live and work in a fishbowl in the municipal world, you know, so, but that's where my really cranky HR hat comes in.
It's not always a fishbowl either.
Yeah, no, no.
A bowl it is, but it's not always a fishbowl.
All right, well. It's funny. Oh, you and Mary as well?
Yeah.
I'm like, what? I didn't say anything.
She's back everyone arrives at you, Mary.
You know, you gotta call them as you see them and, you know, something, we're, we're not really trying to dig out of any hole, but we have a good town and we, and we expect to.
Now it's a-
When, when we, when we do all this, we're gonna present that to not only the people of our town, but the people who wanna come and apply here. That we have, we have, we have what they want.
Absolutely.
No, I think it's, in, in a lot of ways, it's an attractive position.
It is, absolutely.
It really is because, I'll tell you why. You will attract people who have been town administrators in tiny towns, and it's a step up, you know. You will, you know, depending on where somebody is geographically, you know, they may consider a lateral. But you also may get one of those planners or DPW, you know, superintendents who wants to get into general government versus their specialty. So it really is. I mean, my first time in Rockland was decades ago. My very dear friend grew up here, so I don't know if any of you know her, Nancy Marshall. Her dad, I think, was postmaster years ago. So I'll have to tell her I was here tonight. Any other questions? I wanna let you go. I could talk all night.
No, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Oh, great. Well, I'm very happy to be here. It's funny, you mentioned Brockton. I have interviews for a chief finance officer in Brockton tomorrow morning. So I'm appreciative of tonight's scheduling.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Great meeting you.
No matter what you do.
Thank you.
I wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Get me on speed dial tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
So nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, take care.
Thank you very much. All right, we've heard from both candidates. We wanna make a decision tonight. I think that we need to get moving on this. And I don't, you know, I couldn't tell you which one to pick, whatever the board thinks of, of the presentation tonight.
Well, I, I thought both presentations were strong. I really do. I think both organizations have experience. Based on the presentation, it seems like the UMass one is a little broader, where the first presentation seemed to focus a little more, at least this presentation did, more on the town administrator, town manager position, where she referenced a lot of their experience on other municipal jobs. But I do think both presentations were, you know, were strong.
So is that, is that any?
That's just an opinion. I haven't made a vote. I just, it was just, it was just an observation on my part. That's all.
Anybody else?
They seemed to focus.
Mike Muller?
I have a few thoughts. First of all, Marcy, I wanna thank you for pulling both those other organizations here. And, you know, like as, like as Rich mentioned, you know, their presentations were certainly quality. I mean, like in, or like if we were to choose either one of them, I think we'd honestly be fine. My thinking is twofold. One, I agree with Rich about our community paradigm. I think their focus, like on this all position is helpful, but just also from my, my, our professional, our professional capacity, I also know the type of services in addition that they provide communities in terms of, oh, you know, all like assistance with like additional, our staffing, like resources and support is huge. I also, you know, and I think that could be very helpful to us based on the timeline. We're trying to, you know, I like, I think meet, but also I like understanding we have to be like realistic with it as well. And there might be like a gap as well.
Might be a gap, yep.
And, oh, like, and I think they could help us if they be fill, fill that gap. That's what they also do. Also, yeah, like I liked how, oh, you know, like, I can, I think you nailed it, Rich, how focused it was. That being said, going forward as a town, I think there's a lot of things we could do, oh, you know, oh, like outside of this project, oh, with the Collins-
To utilize. Yeah, oh, no, absolutely.
There's, oh, you know, like-
We have other needs.
We talked two weeks ago about the charter.
Sure.
Oh, you know, oh, and that would be, oh, like in my opinion, like an ideal group. But in terms of this purpose, like in the importance of it, I like, I agree exactly with you, Rich, so.
Is there a price difference in the two?
Both proposals came in just shy of $10,000. I'd have to look at the proposals again, but they were just within $100 of one another.
Yeah.
98, 25, and, you know, 9900. It was very small differential in the price.
Yeah, I just saw one of them. I couldn't find the other one, but.
Marcy, just for public knowledge, where would the funding come from for these firms?
Sure. So we, we still have some discretionary spending in the Board of Selectmen's budget that we can utilize to pay for the search firm.
Yep.
Well, hey, how you doing, John?
And we also have the chairman of the finance committee here.
Are we allowed to ask for the public's?
That was real funny. If you want to, we have a human resources person. We have a finance-
Does anyone-
Finance committee chairman here.
Favor one or the other, or?
For what?
For who we're gonna-
Not to put you guys on the spot at all.
Just if anyone has an opinion.
So I, I thought the Collins Center was more transparent. I thought that their idea of giving you all the resumes was good. Because if you do have to go second round, you know, if they, you know, if the other group gave you seven, you didn't like all seven of them, they weren't working out, you, now you gotta kinda restart the engine versus I have all the resumes. And in addition to the four, or five, or six we recommend, maybe we wanna bring in one or two from that group, so. But I agree with you. I think that the community paradigm was more focused on town manager. The town of Norwell, though, did go with the Collins Center.
I noticed a lot more local municipalities for Collins Center.
Yeah, so it's a-
I didn't see many for Paradigm. Most of the communities were more northwest.
Really? I think there's, there's extensive communities that use both organizations.
Maybe just wasn't in the, maybe just-
And there's communities that go back and forth, honestly, too.
Sure, absolutely.
And it almost, it became almost the position thing. Some, some tend to be stronger on others than-
No, sir, I do not.
Because the, Mike, to your point, I think that there are, there are areas of the Collins Center that we could use. I just think for this one, my own opinion is we, we might be better off on the other one, just.
I share that.
I think the Collins Center for those offices, I think they offer different services, but they're all independent of each other. And you can go out to them and use them for any service that you want. I thought both presentations were very good. I thought they were outstanding, actually. But one of the things with, with Paradigm was, I really liked how they go to the colleges and the alumni, and they do an extensive search, where I feel, I sort of felt like Collins Center might stay in the general MMA, the ICMA, the, I didn't feel like their base was as extensive. So that was my personal opinion. I think I would go with the first as opposed to the latter, but both presentations were great.
I think you wanna pull in some of what the Collins Center was doing, though, because they were talking about calling into people that are not looking to apply or have not kinda raised their hand. And they're getting out into a network of people that are potential really good candidates that are just not in the normal mainstream. So I think if you, if there's any way for you guys to, if you choose one and then try to pull in some-
They both customize them.
They both, yeah. They absolutely customize to what we want to do.
And even, and depending upon whether you wanted them in the negotiations at the end, I realize you're all, you all have that knowledge capability and the attorneys to do that. But I did like that they included that in their price from beginning to end.
It was not an ad.
Where this is not included at all, so you don't have the option. And their price is within $100 and I just think-
It was a more-
And we liked that.
A more comprehensive program, I think, with Paradigm overall.
I, I think I felt when we, when I first read each proposal and we decide, we invited them to come, that you'd hear a very excellent presentation from both of them. And it was my hope that the board would feel perhaps an affinity to work with one organization over the other. They both have a great reputation. They've both done a lot of good work across the Commonwealth. So it may boil down to who you feel comfortable working with.
I also think Bernie brings a good background with him because he served in the position. And, you know, he's been on both sides of the aisle with it, you know, he's been a candidate and he's been in the chair, so.
So again, you know, coming, and again, not, but her, her background more of the HR side, they were, they were more on that side. And I think there's some benefits to that.
Right.
But I also like, kind of the team that Paradigm put together. Also having a, a local member with a pretty extensive knowledge of the South Shore and, and multiple towns down here that's part of the team, I think is also potentially beneficial, particularly if we find someone that may not have extensive experience, that we may have someone local that can, that can help that person navigate through, you know.
Like a resource.
Yeah.
Mentor.
Yep. So on that note, I make a motion to hire our community, our Paradigm, to conduct our town administrator search.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. It seems like there was plenty of discussion already. All those in favor? And that's a unanimous vote for Paradigm. Now, the committee, we want five or seven people.
Think advertise it, advertise it for a couple of days, a couple of weeks anyway, because they're gonna be working on their background, we're gonna be, being interviewed by, by Paradigm, to find what we want.
So looking on that, I, I think, looking at the timeline, I think if we can put that search committee together by the last week of January.
You know, actually, there's something that, that Collins Center said that was interesting was, you know, obviously, we're looking for five to seven people.
Right.
But what if each one of us submitted five names to Marcy? We can all see it. We're obviously gonna have duplicate names. We might be able to establish that five to seven people and then Marcy can reach out to see, to engage their interest in it.
The only, again, I don't wanna try to hit like a pause button here, but the only thought I have is, oh, maybe, I mean, because we have a ways to go before we actually engage the screening committee.
Yep. We do have a lot, yeah.
Oh, like we sit down, like individually and have-
Yeah, we've been talking about this. Maybe we bring that up in our conference on the second.
Well, no, like even have like Bernie really, or whoever he has really, get a sense of our priorities.
Yep.
Oh, like have him, oh, have the opportunity to talk to Marcy, to Stacy, oh, like and really, oh, learn kinda more about what we're trying to do here. I mean, we know what we're trying to do. But, oh, like exactly, oh, like what our goals are, and then maybe have him, oh, like recommend some, oh, potential, oh, a potential composition. Oh, so like he might say, like, I mean, he won't be able to name people per se.
Right.
But he could say, like, you might wanna have like a business, oh, you know, like, oh, like a finance, a community member. Oh, and so I don't wanna preempt, like any recommendation that he might have.
I think you're right. I think you're absolutely right. I think that, I heard him mention that they would help us with the screening.
Yep.
Gathering the screening people. Because I think that's the most important part of it. I mean, we have an HR person that we're trying to make sure is, is in the proper place and in all the time. And, you know, shouldn't they be on it at least, the screening committee? I don't know. I just, I don't know.
Not necessarily. Yeah, they'd be answering.
Like, I suppose. I mean, I just, you know, I just, I just want, I just want qualified people.
So that's what, so that's the biggest-
I don't want, I don't want, I don't want the average person who, who says, I'd like to be on it just 'cause I like-
Well, my taxes are too high. I mean, I pay too high taxes too, but I mean, you have to know how it goes.
I don't wanna overstep the board and misspeak, but I think that you have time and you could think about the composition of the committee. And then when we convene in our next meeting, maybe we could have an agenda item to further discuss what groups you would like represented on the search committee, which might help us-
We can ask our guy we desire.
Look toward the people who would sit on it.
When, when and, and who.
And at what point in the process do we have to do this too? I mean, maybe we don't have to do this for a week.
If we have a lot of time, then we can think it over carefully.
I don't think it's come up with a solid plan, you know.
But I do think as we look at this, I think we wanna look at a broad picture. So anytime that you're, you're looking to hire someone in, in this capacity, in this level, you wanna look at people with some experience. So, and, and not against anything else, but we wanna look at more than they happen to be a member of a finance committee, or they happen to be a member of a school committee, or they happen to be a member of, because I think that limits ourselves. So one of the things, I think, at least for me personally, and I jotted a few names down here, not just those that are currently in a public position, but there are members of this community in the private sector that have extensive experience of hiring executive level positions. And I think those, there's some, some people out there that we may wanna look at, reaching out to and seeing if they want to. It may be their first foray into public service, but I think there are some candidates out there that may be, may be strong and help bring some, some experience to the table.
I, I love that.
So we wanna put it on the next meeting's agenda, that will-
Well, should we just wait to hear from?
Well, we'll hear from, I'll hear from-
Why don't I reach out to Bernie tomorrow?
Yeah, and have him give us the timetable, what he thinks is best.
And speak with him about next steps you need to take and what the timeline is. And then I'll make a recommendation for which meeting we should put it on.
And see, you know, he's gonna be able to pull from what some other committees have done, as far as what they pulled from the public, the private sector, how they put those committees, those committees together.
I would guess you have at least 30 days before this becomes an issue, because he's gonna help first with individual interviews with each of you, with department heads, drafting priorities in a job description. So we have a little bit of time.
I'm excited.
Beautiful. Congress Minister, oh, wait, we have number seven. And now Mr. Alaf, we'll handle this one.
So Chairman Ryan, while you were out last time, missing the meeting, we negotiated a contract with the fire chief. We negotiated a contract extension with the base salary of $128,000 per year, which is a salary increase of zero percent over the course of the three years. Scott graciously presented that to us. He's very happy in his position. He obviously lives in this town. His wife also works in the town as a teacher. And he would just like to continue his service with the town of Rockland with no salary increase over the next three years. So I think that's a, it's not some- the next three years, so I think that's a, it's not something that you see in, uh, in these positions, you don't see it often, it was probably the easiest negotiation any of us have been a part of, Scott waited out there, and we are very lucky to have Chief Duffy back on board for another three years.
So it was my first negotiation sitting on the board? I'm hoping that all the rest of them go that way?
Yeah, really.
So, it's a good news.
Because my wife works for the chief and he's her direct boss, I don't vote on anything of the contract and certain fire department issues, but, but I just, people wonder why my name does not appear on the contract, that's the reason.
So I would make a motion-
So I'll make a, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, the contract for, I'm sorry? Sorry about that.
You have to blow it on, too.
Make a motion to accept the, the new contract, three-year contract for the Fire Chief at the terms that were agreed upon.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor? I got to take a roll call vote on this, just for the record, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Olafman?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And I am abstaining, Mr. Ryan, thank you. Town administrators' report and correspondence.
Thank you. The only quick comment I'll make is to just thank all of our staff and all the residents who came out last night to support us at the town meeting, really thankful for all of the staff effort that went into preparing for it and getting the word out, and I have to add a thank you to the schools for helping us get the message out as well, they did a great job with an auto dialer, and really, we saw the turnout was remarkable, which we're all very thankful for. And then just to, again, like a broken record, remind everyone that we probably will be having eventual winter weather, so just to be aware of the winter parking van.
All right, Selectmen's comments, Mr. Penny?
To reiterate, Marcy, I want to thank all the residents that came out last night, well over 400 people, I cannot remember the last time, other than a couple of override votes, that we saw that many people. I was, uh, I don't want to say surprised, I wasn't, but it was, it was really nice to see it, the engagement, um, so many people there that I talked to were aware of what was going on, it just, I really feel encouraged with, with the way that the, the direction that we're going. I want to announce my next office hours, next Thursday, January 17th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the Senior Center. Last time I was there, I, I got to talk to four, I was there for almost three hours. If, if people want me to stay there for three hours, I will be there for three hours, so please come, come by with your questions. And lastly, I want to congratulate the, the boys' high school basketball team. They had an opportunity to play at the Garden Sunday, it was one year too late for my son, but we went there, supported it, it was the Good Sport Invitational, the proceeds went to the Andrew Lawson Foundation in Norwell, and it was just a phenomenal time, there were five high school games that took place on Sunday, it was just a great atmosphere and, and kids had a tremendous opportunity, we were able to get our youth basketball kids on the floor, our cheerleaders on the floor, it was, it was pretty cool, so, thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
I'll be very quick, oh, not to, again, sound like a broken record, but I just want to thank everyone who came out last night, um, oh, you know, like it really showed what Rockland's all about, and, um, like in Mr. Larry, Mr. Ryan, not Mr. Larry, but Mr. Ryan, um, in one of his eloquent, oh, Facebook posts, I'll put it perfectly as, oh, you know, like as someone who, I mean, oh, me, Mike and Larry, who, like, were like the three members up here, oh, like all summer, oh, like in, oh, in addition to all the staff here in, at Town Hall, who, like, who went through, frankly, the crap we went through, to see the town come out and, oh, oh, really show us, like, at least in my opinion, our, that they, that they really believed in us and have had our back over the past six months was just really inspiring or validating, I'm not even sure what the word is, but, I could meant everything to me, and, um, and I just want to thank everyone for that, so, that's all I have, Mr. Chilton.
Ms. Nyman?
I also want to thank the residents for coming out, it was a great showing of people and it was really inspiring, I won't keep talking about it, but as I'm sure everyone else is very grateful for everyone coming out, but also, I just want to update the board that I did go to my first capital planning committee meeting last week, um, Mike Mullin was also there as well, we did get a lot of updates on the Youth Commission and the new fire station that they want to build, so it was really informative and I learned a lot from the committee about what they do and what they're all about, so it was a good learning experience for me, and that's all I have tonight.
Very good, Mr. Olafman?
So I'm, I'm going to say pretty much the same thing everybody else did, and I think everybody that was there last night would expect us to say this, but, you know, thank you to the residents, Mike, I think the word you were looking for was humbling, right? It was very humbling.
You always finish-
I do, I do, I do, you know, you know, there's, there's the initial thought and then, you know, I tie it all in for you. It was very humbling, you know, we stood out there and we greeted the residents as they came in, and a lot of residents stood out in the cold, yeah, I mean, at one point I walked outside and they were wrapped around the front of the junior high, it was, it was really humbling to see, and to your point, Mike, everybody had a positive thing to say, you know, there was no one in there with any kind of agenda outside of supporting the Board of Selectmen, and that was really, really, really awesome to see, you know what I mean, so, you know, we just got to, we got to bottle that up and maintain that and keep riding this forward, because I think, I think the town does support us right now, and I think the town, to your point, supports the town, and they want to see the town continue to move forward, they recognize that we're, we're taking those, those steps, and, yeah, it was a really, really proud moment yesterday, it was great. One more thing, too, just prior to this meeting, I met with the chairman of Reimagine Rockland, Mr. Mullin, and we finalized the date for, or the dates for Restaurant Week, year number two will be March 3rd through March 9th, March 9th is, you know, Rockland's 145th birthday, so March 3rd through March 9th, obviously there'll be a lot more information coming out on this, we're partnering with Reimagine Rockland again to run this, and again, this will be year number two, hopefully we have power when, when it all starts and we can avoid the winter storms like last year, but very excited to be doing this again, and hopefully this maintains, stays as a tradition in this town, so.
Excellent. As the chairman of the Rockland Board of Selectmen, so many times, you know, you wake up in the middle of the night and you think about what's going to happen in town, and, you know, you're thinking about town meeting and, and you're nervous there's not going to be enough people to show up, and you want it to how you feel, and, you know, you get all sorts of goosebumps and, and sick feelings and, you know, you're, because you want the best for the town of Rockland, and it was overwhelming to see the people pouring through the door. I saw some of my old buddies, and I'm talking about the real old buddies, and they know who they are, but they even came out, 90 years old, 88 years old, to, to, to tell us that they believe in us. I mean, there wasn't one question asked, nobody said, well, how come, anything? So that tells us that, you know, those people, 400-plus people came out there not to listen to us, not to, you know, play games, but just to support us, and 100%, you know, hands up and hands down, it was a five-minute meeting, what everybody, every selectman in the world dreams of, quite frankly, and, uh, thank you, thank you, and thank you. And I said it to the newspaper guys, and I said it on the internet, "Rockland is a wonderful place to live and raise your family, so don't ever be afraid to come here." With that, thank you and good night, everyone. A motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Olafman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Larry says yes also. Mr. Larry.